Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to start the meeting. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to make a statement and then we can give our flag to roll off. Okay, a statement by the board of presidents in accordance. In accordance with the provisions of the open public meetings that NJSA ten polling board that states the 1975 C two thirty-one S one mentioned two thousand and six C seventy as to the Asbury Park Road that takes you by the added notice of the public community by sending a notice on taking locations to extend it on the agenda of this meeting. The Asbury Park President Co-Student January third twenty twenty-five life and how to put those offers in place at the administrative building, military board, district schools, Asbury Park, Mr. Clark, Asbury Park, ladies, partners, the city clerk from January service twenty twenty-five. A mission statement of the Asbury Park School that will provide often not relative to the rest of their region. Everyone for this skills and characters is seen as the first to provide to the global society. Roll off.
Ms. Satchman?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Gorill?
Here.
Mr. LaRocque?
Here.
Ms. Isensky?
Here.
Captain Penner?
Here.
Ms. Rick?
Here.
Ms. Westman?
Here.
Mr. Rossby?
Here.
Thank you.
Can we have the flag? So we'd like to start this meeting out always talking about the most impactful assets we have as a meeting for our children, our staff, and we have the presentation by the acting superintendent of our community.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to call up Dr. Perry Bendino to recognize his staff and students of the law.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Perry Bendino, principal of the Asbury Park High School. It is always a pleasure to come up here and celebrate our students and staff. I'd like to start with our student athlete, a young man who has truly displayed great aptitude for performing under duress and pressure. Elliot Delgado, grade twelve, is our, is our bowler, is an A student. He qualified for the state tournament and created an upset for Shore Regional in the first round, and he is currently over three point five GPA ranking in the top ten of our school. I will, he's down here, I will, oh Elliot, come on. So Elliot, I also want to say this, he is, like many of our students of the month, truly a model student. You'll always see him in a hall, seem extremely respectful, helpful, and we can always rely on him. So it is my pleasure truly to bestow this honor. Thank you so much. And a big shout out to the whole bowling team and Coach Ward for really putting us on the mat for both. Next up, we have for our, for our students, students of the month, it's actually co-student of the month. I met with these young ladies about a month ago to discuss some of our updated school policies around cell phones. They were very thoughtful, they were very respectful, but they also were very convincing, and their advocacy truly should be celebrated. So co-students of the month, Ms. Juva, Julia Rojas and Yudira Herrera Ortiz. Both grade twelve, both seniors. Both carry A averages. And, and as I mentioned before, one of the difficult things to do, one of the more difficult things to do when you are a high schooler and you are requesting a meeting with the principal is to be articulate, stoic, and set in your, in your, in your ways, but I do recognize these young ladies as, as our leaders currently, but they aren't, two excellent things coming up in the future. So once again, young ladies, congratulations. Thank you, young ladies. And finally rounding out the high school, our staff member of the month. We had a leadership meeting yesterday to just review some things, some of the things we're proud of, some of the things that we're working on in our schools, and a question was asked about some of the things that leaders hold dear to their hearts, and the one thing I mentioned was trust and faith. It's sometimes very hard to build. Our staff member, Ms. Kristen McNulty, school nurse, has created that trust and faith, and her role in our school has extended to be slightly district-wide where she is helping other schools of her staff in making sure our students are safe, healthy, and taken care of. So it is my honor to work with you, work alongside with you, and I'm very proud to be your principal. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. And now, Mr. Mount Corr, MOK.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
We're going to start with our student of the month. This young man, greatness isn't measured by size, it's about character and confidence. And this young man started the year off, had a rough start, but all throughout the school year, I knew that he had it in him. And recently, he has made a profound change. He has embraced academics, he has been a contributor to a very positive environment in the classroom, he has played multiple sports, football, basketball, and is an all-around athlete. And a lot of times, we pinch hold our students by saying what they can't do, but this young man is truly an inspiration to me because he reminds me a lot of myself when I was younger, that I needed carrying people in my community, in my village, to help me find my path to greatness. So without any further ado, I would like to recognize our student of the month, Mr. Saleem Robinson. Come on up. His teacher wrote, "He makes brave decisions." He's determined in his academics, he has a great sense of humor, he can uplift his peers and other adults in the building. I have to say this, this is the only scholar in our building that is comfortable in his skin to relate to any staff member, that includes teachers, coaches, our security, our custodial staff, and more importantly, our administration. So let's give another round of applause to Mr. Robinson. Thank you very much. Our second individual that we will recognize is our student athlete of the month. This young lady, written by her coach Miller, is a pleasure to work with. She's on the cross-country team, she's a basketball player year-round, she enjoys not only cross-country basketball, but she is making great progress in the English language. Despite any barriers that this young lady has, she has proven that despite what you're given in life, that you're going to make the best of it. She's a vital female athlete, a vital participant on all her teams, she shows sportsmanship, dedication, a commitment to her team and her teammates. She always maintains a positive attitude, a good competitive balance, sportsmanship is always at the forefront of her performances, and she has a strong desire to win, but she is graceful even in defeat. At this time, we will recognize Yovana Sanchez Utevers. Come on up. Let's go family, and she has a smile that will light up the road. Come on up. Lastly, I have a script, I'm going to read the script for this individual, it's one of our staff members. A dedicated professional, proud professional, born and raised in Haiti, brings a very unique perspective to our students at MOK. She's fluent both in Creole, French, and English, she plays a vital role in the bilingual department, she's a translator, every time we have a parent that is in need of translation, she's there, she fosters positive relationships, but not only the staff, but the students alike. She is pursuing her teaching career at ESL, she currently has a secure substitute certification that allows us to use her in various capacities, she is also an active member in our staff for Gear Up Brookdale, that she goes to Brookdale University twice a week to make sure our students receive ELA math science STEM-related activities. She is also regarded as a strong support to my discipline practices in MOK. She helps call parents, she rounds up students, she helps participate in active investigations so we can determine any consequences or any wrongdoings that might occur, but she also knows how to build students up after they have made mistakes in our culture. She's a pleasure to work with, she has done many, many marvelous things, she is also a chef in her part-time career where she cooks and sometimes provides snacks and things not for just the staff, but to our students at MOK as well. At this time, I am very honored to introduce our staff member of the month, Mrs. Alberta Sabell. And she has another one that has a smile that will light up the road.
At this time, Dr. Gorill Schultz.
Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Schultz, the proud principal of the Bradley Elementary. Yes, yes. And tonight for our student of the month, we have a gentleman who supersedes expectations as a Bradley Elementary student. He is nominated by his teacher, Mrs. Lynch Anthony, as someone who not only showcases academic excellence in the classroom, but also demonstrates kindness and genuine care for his peers. He is also very proactive in being engaged in his learning, and as his principal, I would like to highlight that he has the first two marking periods, he has successfully earned straight A's, including majority A classes, and he has three months of this school year with perfect attendance. So he is on his way to being a superstar student, we are so proud of him. He is joined tonight not only by his family, but with an entourage of peers and friends to speak to the kind young man he is, Mr. Jensen Quinn. Please come up and join us. Family, please come up and celebrate this honorable young man. Friends, you can come up too. Yes, fill him in, fill him in. Great job, thank you. And now for our staff of the month for the Bradley Elementary School. I'm always excited to honor our staff, but this one is just a little bit sweeter because this staff member, I've had the pleasure and privilege of working with her, this is my second school year, she has been essential in ensuring that Bradley operates smoothly as a third through sixth grade school. When I tell you, she is aware of many hats that is truly an understatement. There is not a moment in the day that she is not busy engaging with students, assisting staff, making sure I am okay and asking if I need anything when I'm the one that very much needs to be asking her that. She has been described by her staff members as an advocate for children, someone who treats parents, families, and students compassionately, and is always looking out for the best interests of the children we serve. Our dynamically dedicated, wonderful student council, school counselor, tonight joined by her family, Mrs. Joanne Major Phillip, please come up and earn your award with pink and green flowers just for you. Thank you, everyone.
Now at this time, Mr. Zakia Delorbe, very good morning.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mrs. Zakia Delorbe, and I am the principal at Thurgood Marshall Elementary School. I would first like to start off recognizing my student of the month. Unfortunately, due to mom's work schedule, he could not be here, but he still deserves to be recognized. I would like to talk about Brandon Johnson. Sometimes school is not easy for everyone, and despite the challenges that he may face, Brandon comes to school every day, ready to attack them. He earned student of the month by following directions, participating in centers in a large group, and by always being eager to show what he knows. Recently, he just breezed right through his pre-primar sight words. So again, congratulations to kindergarten student Brandon Johnson. Next, I would like to recognize our staff of the month. Usually I speak genuinely, genuinely from the heart, I don't really read anything, but someone who wanted to be tonight could not be, and she asked that I read this, so I am going to do that. A heart of gold in our preschool community, Jamie Clark. First, Ms. Clark, can you come up? How about that? All right, let me read this while you're standing here, okay? Jamie Clark is the kind of preschool teacher every parent dreams for their child, with a heart of gold, cultivates an environment where every little one steals value and cherished. Her incredible relationship with families create a strong foundation of trust and collaboration, ensuring that each child's unique needs are met. Jamie is a true leader in her department, consistently participating in school functions and inspiring her colleagues with her unstoppable dedication. Her radiant smile lights up every room, spreading warmth and positivity that motivates both students and staff alike. I am truly lucky to work alongside Jamie as we nurture our little bishops, helping them spread their wings and shine brightly in the world. With Jamie, every child is given the love and support needed to flourish, making her an invaluable asset to our community. We love you, Jamie Clark, and I'm sorry today I'm not there. Love, Mrs. Philhauer. Congratulations. Come on up. So as Ms. Clark's family comes up, this is just a side note, Ms. Clark inspired me to lose weight. We have the biggest challenge, sorry, the Biggest Loser Challenge happening at Thurgood Marshall, and the way that she runs the program is so professional, and I have to report to her every Friday and weigh in. I'm down fifteen pounds because of Ms. Clark. Congratulations.
Let's hear it again for the incredible students and staff at Asbury Park.
It's great to see so many, so many students come out and represent their, their fellow school, school blood, school beat, because it shows that the community that we have within ourselves. Going into that, we haven't for a long time had a student representative from the school sit with us, and I am so honored and privileged because I have met this gentleman a couple of times, and he's always been enthusiastic about the district, and he really cares about what's going on. And I'd like to introduce Mr. Robert Pennington, our student representative. Would you like to say something?
Oh, hello, hi, everyone. I'm Robert, I've been in this district for a long time. I'm a senior now, and I'm doing, I'm doing my big thing, you know, in the high school, and I'm very honored that I've been asked to be a student representative for the district because I love Asbury, point blank, period. Thank you.
I want to make a correction, it's Robert Pennington the third.
As we go on, we have, I'm going to change up the order, it's going to get a little boring, but these are mandated things that we have to do. We have our auditor here, who has to make an audit of presentation to tell us what we're doing with our financial structure, our, our district. So please allow him to speak to us and discuss.
Thank you for having me, and as you said, it's not nearly exciting as all the presentations are, but I'll be quick, I promise I'll be, I'll be in half. My name is Chris Odecker, I'm the manager. All right, so there are two places in the audit that I usually like to direct people's attention to right at the beginning. On page one, it's our letter of transmittal, and then on page seventeen, what's called management's discussion and analysis. These reports are prepared by management in conjunction with us, the auditors, and they do their best job to try to summarize and make all those hundred, hundred fifty pages behind it a little more concise, a little easier to read. Next in the report, where I like to direct people, is our audit, our audit opinions. So on page eleven, we have what's called the independent auditors' report. So the audits are conducted by generally accepted auditing standards, governmental auditing standards, as well as any rule we ever decide to come up with that year, and they will come up with a few every year. So we have what's called an unmodified opinion, that means that the financial statements were presented materially, without any material statements, it's the cleanest opinion that we can render on a financial statement. Next, we have near the back of the report, on page two oh five, we have what's called report on internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance. We do not give what's called an opinion on internal controls, but we do gain an understanding of them based through walkthroughs, or testing, or inquiry, et cetera, and we found no control deficiencies or compliance issues to report in individuals of the district. The last report, within the report, is report on compliance and report on internal control over compliance of major programs. So this has to do with your state and federal grant. If the district spends over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in either state or federal, we're required to do what's called a single audit. So throughout the audit, we look at all the grants in some way, shape, or fashion, but a single audit is required to look a little more closely at specific grants based on risk, how the nation covered, et cetera. So programs we looked at this year for your state were your stated public, your extraordinary aid, and your reimbursed TPAs or security, and then federal with your title loan. Again, we had unmodified opinion, which is the cleanest opinion we can render. We do have one finding that is a repeat finding from last year that has to do with just increasing the supporting documentation that the district keeps for their application for state school aid, but it's, it's not a material weakness, it's not a significant deficiency, it's just, it has to be reported, and it's still an unmodified opinion, it is the cleanest opinion we can render. Last thing, the only numbers up for you right tonight, is our recapitulation of fund balance, which is on your C one, bottom of your C one, page ninety-three. So the district in total has seventeen million in fund balance, however, that's broken down into different pieces with different levels of restriction. So of that seventeen million, about one point one is in your capital reserve, about four hundred and eighty-five thousand is in your maintenance reserve, another five hundred and one thousand is in an emergency reserve. Your excess surplus, which is required to be used in your two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six budget, is one point six nine million. Your assigned designated, which is, which was, what was used in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, the current school year. the current school year, was ten point nine million. Your coverage to the year end was about a hundred and twenty thousand, and then unassigned was about two point two million. So that's all I have for you tonight. The last thing I always like to say is thank you so much, Mrs. Brown, and the entire business office. Audits are difficult. We ask for a lot of reports, we ask a lot of questions. They're trying to do their job, and we're trying to do ours. They're always very helpful, and we appreciate all the help throughout the audit. If you have any questions for me tonight, any comments, I'm happy to answer them. If you have anything that you think in the future, Mrs. Brown is happy to hold me, I'm always available. So thank you so much for having me, and uh, any questions? Any good answer to any questions tomorrow?
Yeah, I have two questions. Hi. And the first question is, so there's no adverse opinions?
Nope, unmodified. Yep.
Oh, sorry, and this audit is as of June thirty, twenty twenty?
Correct, yep, June thirty, twenty twenty-four. The deadline for issuance was January fifteenth, and it was issued on?
Eight.
Yep, no problem.
Could you just give me that number again for the reserve that will be implied to the twenty-five?
Twenty-five, twenty-six, yeah. It's called our excess surplus on the bottom of the C1, which is page ninety-three of the audit, but the actual number, the full number, not rounded, one million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine. Alright, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Our next presentation will be from our principals, and they will discuss a few interesting things. So. Right now, we're having a presentation from all of our principals to come up and discuss.
Good evening, once again.
Good evening.
I would like to share with you some of the great things that are happening at Third Group Marshall. We have our kindergarten through second grade emotional regulation impairment program up and running. We have our collaboration with the Asbury Park Library with our bi-monthly pop-up book dates. Our early reading workshop in collaboration, again, with the library to provide parents with the tools to aid themselves and students in early literacy. We're continuing to gain momentum with our Ufly program. That is the program that's basically teaching our students, it's a phonics program, teaching our students how to recognize letters and sounds, which is crucial in learning how to read. We have weekly, we are establishing a weekly preschool limit-setting training for teachers to help them strengthen the student-teacher relationship and improve teachers' ability to support their students in social, emotional learning replay. There will be weekly walk, uh, walking trips for preschool students to the Asbury Park Library to strengthen the district's early literacy initiatives. On February eighth, there was a successful early school year registration kickoff with fifty families registering for the pre-K kindergarten program. The early childhood department actually streamlined registration to simplify the process, making it easier for registration and to retain our current students. We're continuing to celebrate student success by having monthly ice cream Sunday celebrations with the principal, recognizing students for their hard work. Uh, the preschool program is in its twenty-fifth year celebration in Asbury Park, so there is a pre-K twenty-fifth anniversary gala planning underway that will take place in the spring. We have a kindergarten readiness program to begin in March for preschool students who are exhibiting kindergarten readiness skills. Our Read Across America event will take place on March fifth, where many community members will be donating their time to read to the students of Asbury Park. And lastly, we have our Black History Celebration that will take place tomorrow, where we have a Black Inventors Shriek Fair and grade-level performances. We are all invited to attend. Thank you.
Up next for Bradley, from December, when Mr. Trevino shared out our last positive highlights to February, Bradley has been booked and busy. We successfully implemented the first-ever school-wide shutdown for Lincoln Form B. This was to mimic NJSLA procedures and also test out networking, potential issues behind the scenes. Great feedback from our staff on this, and also positive feedback from our students, who were the ones actually taking the tests. Coming off of that NJSLA shutdown for Lincoln, we really analyzed our Lincoln data from Form A to Form B, and I am very proud to share on behalf of the staff and students at Bradley that we had increases in proficiency for ELA and math in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and sixth grade. So from the beginning, yes, from beginning of year to mid-year, that is a, a very, very huge go for our students, and the future is looking bright for our spring testing. We hosted our first-ever fall-to-winter benchmark awards for one hundred and seven tiered prizes, bronze level, silver level, and gold level to go, because Bradley is going for it. The gold this year, um, they were given out to students at a home room level, grade level, and building level that had the most growth from Form A to Form B and diagnosed at one to two and eye-ready. We hosted our school-wide PBSIS New Year Kickoff Feb Rally, where over two hundred prizes were given to students based on their PBSIS tickets, including Principal Burday, which took place this past Monday. We hosted our first after-school dance of the year last week. We had a hundred and seventy-five RSVPs between our students and families. It was a fantastic event. Our student council representatives are leading the way. We're continuing to meet regularly. Shout out to my fourth-grade student council president, Liam Turner, who is here tonight, and they are really exhibiting leadership for their building. We have re-inventoried our Chromebooks with the help of ITC, the Office of Curriculum and Instruction, and Central Office, and are moving into one-to-one devices for the spring, which is huge. We are so excited, and thank you to the district team for making that happen. Um, year-end programming is coming to sixth grade, so we've, we're excited to see that started. Our PTO is still in full effect, we've been having regular meetings. Thank you, Ms. Nina Summerlin, for all of the support with that. We have begun participation in the New Jersey Inclusion Practices Grant with the New Jersey Coalition for Inclusion Education with Mr. Nunes and Dr. Garvelino from Special Services, so we're very excited to get that off the ground. We have continued partnerships with the Asbury Book Cooperative and Bridge of Books to provide text, and our literacy and math family nights are coming in mid-March, so stay tuned for that. And that's a wrap on Bradley.
Good evening. We're gonna start with our attendance. As of right now, our students have a ninety-three percent attendance rate at the MoK. Uh, our highest was in September, ninety-five percent. So we went ninety-five percent, ninety-two percent, ninety-three percent, ninety-two percent, ninety-three percent. So on average, we're doing a fantastic job. Our teachers, for the September day, were at ninety-two percent. And these are teachers that are currently active and working, and we only have two teachers that are on extended leave. So our teacher for the school year so far, teacher attendance has tweaked around ninety percent, which is outstanding. So our teacher attendance and student attendance is trending up the right way. At the same time, we're driving down chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism was thirty percent. Uh, when we took over here at the MoK, uh, our goal is to get it under twenty percent. The state wants us at ten percent. The state currently is at fourteen percent. So if we could get our chronic, and that's nineteen days or more absent in the school year, so each month, we have driven that down under twenty percent with the expectation that will stay consistent throughout the year. I would like to also report that, uh, we had four staff members, perfect attendance so far this year. We had close to eighteen scholars, were perfect, no days off so far this year. Our college career, I am pleased to say, last two weeks ago, we took a trip to King University, that's where I graduated from, and we took fifty of our eighth-grade students, and we received accommodation and rave about how our students did the tour, they did an educational experience, writing experience, and they had a chance to eat with, uh, some of the deans at, uh, King University, and it was outstanding, outstanding trip that our students came back to school so thrilled about their college experience. We went to Brookdale College two times a week, every week since September, and our students have engaged in STEM opportunities, hands-on opportunities that support mathematics, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. We also have STEAM Park. We have STEAM Park in our schools, and STEAM Park has brought chemistry, physics, and biology to our students in our STEM elective program. We have two professors from the, uh, college that came down to work with our students in electives. We talked to twenty-four students with an ABCF to receive this support. It's working with coding, hands-on experiments, labor building, building communities, and just a lot of camaraderie and support in the classroom. We have actually newsletters that we're gonna share later of some of the activities that our students engage with, with, uh, Brookdale. Gear Up, I cannot say enough about Gear Up. Gear Up, uh, just took fifty of our students to Philadelphia, to the African-American Museum, ironically, on the same day as the Super Bowl parades in Philadelphia, so they were able to see it from the highway, not get caught up in the traffic, and they had a wonderful experience. They were the only students at the museum, and they had a hands-on experience, and it was very personal, and then they went to the buffet to eat afterwards, and they came back extremely happy and full. So I'd just like to say that our students are getting that experience. We also did three trips with Monmouth County Parks Association, or PLS, to the districts, where they're, uh, working with our seventh and eighth-grade students on team building activities. They will be doing nature walk activities, and they will be doing leadership activities to strengthen our students. Also, in terms of, uh, some of our students went to Two River Geyser to experience Shakespeare, and then the cast came to the MoK of Shakespeare to talk and to dialogue with our students on the work, and they really, really enjoyed that experience, as well as our clubs. I'm excited to say we have over twelve clubs. We have a robotics club, the clubs meet every day for thirty minutes after their lunch or before their lunch. Uh, we have robotics, still, a book club, weight training, fitness, board games, uh, game room, guidance club, and I'm, and we have even therapy club, where we get, uh, four or five of our students at a time. They do group therapy with our therapists and our counselors right then during their lunchtime on a volunteer basis or supported by their parents. I'm happy to report we have no vacancies. At this time, we have no substitute teachers in our classrooms. All of our teachers are certified, certificated, and they're engaging our students each and every day. I'm saying it again, we have no vacancies at the middle school. That's, that's remarkable. Just from middle school alone, throughout the state of New Jersey, many, many vacancies, but we have every position filled, and we feel very excited about that. Also, we have a robust sunshine club, our PBS, our PBSIS. A team has worked together to all purpose for this year. We are working on our logo, we're working on our model, we are working on our rules of engagement, so we can be ready to roll out and get to of our PBSIS program. Also, coming down the pipe, uh, approved tonight, we have financial literacy coming, and this is dear to my heart, because we have many students that are at working age at the middle school, and we're looking to give them soft skills, such as banking, how to do a budget, how to create a resume, how to do those things, your credit, credit responsibility, what is interest rate. So they will be doing this during their lunch and class time, one hour a week for ten consecutive weeks, with the expectation after they finish, we can help them secure some summer employment, so they can bring some economic stability to their salaries and possibly to their families. So we're looking forward with that, in part with the board and superintendent and all of our stakeholders to help find some job opportunities for our youth. Also, and I'm finishing up now, uh, we're gonna be doing a vaping activity, where vaping, we know is probably one of the, the most difficult issues in our society today. We don't know where these vapes are coming from, they're coming out the country. We don't know what's in these vapes, they not, they haven't been on the street too long. So we wanna educate our youth about the importance of not vaping and respecting your body, so we're doing a presentation for our students, as well as for our parents as well. And closing out, I just wanna thank the board for the yonder pouches. That's it. The yonder pouches. The yonder pouches, because we implemented yonder since October, and it's been successful. Students are now concentrating on teaching and learning, and our Lincoln B data. We did a comparison analysis, we took our seventh and eighth-grade students currently, we looked at their Lincoln B going back one or two years ago, and we compared Lincoln B to Lincoln B, the same students that were sixth graders that articulated the seventh graders, and the same ones from seventh to eighth. They had done extremely, extremely well, and we have more students that increased their test scores from year to year, so we like to compare apples to apples, and our students have shown when they're sixth graders, they're struggling a little bit, now seventh graders, they're focused, they're doing a fantastic job. Also, our, our ready data. We've closed the learning gap, we have more students that increased in grade levels, and we're ready to just triangulate the data just to see where we can use our baseline assessments, our interim assessments, our, our benchmark assessments, where we can help close the gap over the next eight to ten weeks to prepare our students for NJSLA. So at the middle school, we're doing great things, suspensions are down, camaraderie is up, the, the positivity is, is cruising through the building, and we just did a phenomenal Black History Show yesterday, led by Miss Peterson, and the phenomenal, phenomenal musicians that we had played for Black History Month. We had over a hundred participants, excuse me, a hundred people come out to watch parents, community members, and of course, watch students. So thank you, and I look forward to giving the next update for the MoK.
I'll check the batteries. Alright, so, uh, I'm gonna run through some stats, and I'm gonna start out with, uh, instruction, and I'm gonna start with the big, the big piece. A big shout out to our English department, particularly Ms. Jessica Daniels, who was awarded, uh, Staff Member of the Month recently, um, and this is bigger. Our Fall Block ninth-grade ELA, or our NJSLA, seven, seven, nine average, thirty points above the state average of seven, fourteen. Five of those students, five of those students scored over eight hundred, with one scoring an eight twenty-three, which was just points off of a perfect score. So as a principal, what this tells me is that we have the potential, we have the ability, and when our teachers get to that work and our students are receptive, this is what happens. So this is a testament to the good work and hard work that we're doing right now, a testament to the, the quality of students that we have in the district, and I couldn't be more proud to announce that here tonight. We have our lowest number in recent history of students that qualify for portfolio, which is an alternative way for graduation, um, in several years. So we, we dropped that number down, that is a good thing. This date compares to the same date of last year, we have more students statistically who are ready to graduate, so less money for, uh, paying out to do portfolio courses. Uh, we also have, which is, again, in recent history, we, we don't really have any statistics on this, we have twenty total students who earn the seal of bi-literacy, meaning that they are literate in more than one language. Nineteen percent is in one condition field. And this year, we've, um, and similar to what, uh, Kenya talked about with his, uh, clubs during, during lunch, we have a win advisory period, what I need. And, and here, in, in that time, we identified students who can benefit for tutoring, for time, extra time with reading, extra time with math, and to date, that program in and of itself has decreased the number of students who are credit deficient. That, that deserves a clap. And finally, just culturally speaking, in our school, um, through partnership, various partnerships with the community, such as Ms. Nina Summerlin, the Asbury Park Arts Council, um, we have community organizations coming out, ready to help us renovate different spaces. Um, we have a walk-through of our theater coming up, just to see what is possible for the community to help us with. We have a buddy performing arts program, shout out to Ms. Golden. Um, we also have, uh, we went on a similar trip to, to River Theater, um, Broadway show, so big thank you to Interfaith, uh, neighbors and young masterminds. And we are starting a podcast pretty soon, and one of our main hosts is right here, sitting on the stairs. I did mention our bowling team, we are very, very proud of our bowlers, and we are very, very proud of Mr. Ward for taking us, um, that far. And Mr. Ward, um, himself is a, a very accomplished bowler with countless three. And Mr. Ward, um, himself is a, a very accomplished bowler with countless 300s. Um, and, uh, finally, again, the first in, in, in recent history, we've had our Fast Foot Information Night. Um, and, uh, you know, a big credit goes to Schoolbase, um, for really helping us with that. And again, that's just a testament to community partnerships, which is one of the, one of many things going into the school year that we wanted to focus on rebuilding some of those branches and, and techos in the community so that our kids can perform the way they should, i.e. our five students who scored an 800s and the, the rest who scored passing marks on their New Jersey, uh, assessment. Thank you.
As, as we learned about a lot of these different things that are going on in the schools, I, I have to address some of the things that we, uh, a lot of people don't understand how we're getting to this point. We've realigned the school district this year. So all grades are focused in, in one school. So that means all the teachers learn the same thing. They're not in three or four different buildings. And we're not teaching different things. We're teaching the same thing. And if we're getting it wrong, we're doing it right because we're fixed. So I want to, I want to really thank Acting Superintendent Javino for, for putting that together. And then the staff. And I'm around these schools and I intimately drop by with the permission of our Acting Superintendent. And I am amazed. I went into the middle school and it is totally different. It is totally. I've been in Thurgood and the, the staff and, and the participation is astonishing. This is a thing that we do to generate a better community within this district. Because one, we empower these principals. That's another thing. We empowered the principals to run their school. And that's, that's genius. Because when I grew up, and I'm old, we, my, I remember my principals and they ran their school districts because they knew what needed to be done. They knew the staff. They interacted and they were held responsible. So collectively, the thing that you just heard tonight is simply changing the structure, climate, and the culture. So we got a lot more things I can't discuss, uh, in an open mic because, you know, people are coming out of the woodwork to want to be involved with this district. And, you know, we're getting so many, so many, you know, uh, 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 opportunities to, to work with us and, and support us and do things. And, you know, even, even from all the negative press that we're getting out there, people don't know what's really going on. And I'm seeing it from the distance. So I want to applaud these principals for what they're doing. And I want to make sure we continue to get these opportunities that they need.
And I got to continue the meeting. I do things that I don't like to do, things that I have to, uh, well, we're going for that. But our next, our next thing that we're going into is a report of our committees. Uh, and talk about what's, what's going on. So, uh, committee reports. And we can start off with athletics. It would be, uh, we had our athletic committee, uh, report. And basically, we talked about, uh, hiring of our, uh, our, our staff for the, uh, uh, summer. Uh, and most of them were there. We also had a report from, uh, our director, our coordinator, on the fact that we have an opportunity to discuss a, a project that may be coming in front of our committee next week, next month. Uh, with the Place Athletic Committee. Uh, and basically, uh, you know, it was, it was a very, very small, uh, committee, uh, meeting. So everything seems to be going well. Oh, and we also have our awards dinner coming up. Do you remember what date that is? Is it different? Yeah. We have our, our athletic, uh, committee, uh, President Peterson coming up to address our students.
March 7th.
March 7th. So that's, that's it for the athletic.
Mr. Rowley, was the second thing you mentioned that didn't hear?
Uh, we had a, a, uh, talk about a group coming in to discuss working with the athletic.
Uh, did he have a meeting? Who had a word?
A, the director coordinator said he had a conversation about a group that wanted to present to our committee next month. The police athletic is sort of.
Oh. Thank you. Um, could we possibly be able to, um, call a little summary meeting to, uh, move for the, for this, uh, meeting?
Yes. Uh, next, uh, uh, CNI.
CNI committee met on Wednesday, the 19th at 6:30 PM. Uh, again, we have some great opportunities coming to our kids. Uh, we had a great conversation. And there is some wonderful things that are on the agenda tonight that we are going to approve. So, thanks.
President, I just wanted to mention the fact that the curriculum had the Girl Scouts on the agenda. There is no facility used for, on this agenda for now.
The facilities from what's a bit, um, this associate has gotten in. And it's also got the insurance, uh, the insurance form as well.
And I'm sure they're asking for, they're asking for a waiver, I'm sure, correct?
Um, I'm not aware of it. Um, our staff is staffing it. It's happening from 2:30 to 3:30. We're not, it's not the volunteers that are doing it. I don't know, um, what maybe they would need. What, what time are they?
Maybe, maybe we can add something to the business agenda, um, in anticipation of them submitting facilities use, um, waiving. I guess it would be everything but usually custodial fees. Can we add something because they use the facilities every year that do come in? So that we don't hold up their quota.
So if, with, with, with the Girl Scouts, what they're doing is they're training our staff. So they're not here themselves. I think it's one or two people here that are working where their staff are training to be running the Girl Scouts. So it's not their program in here. It's consultants that are working with them. So the use facility is our own purpose.
Any more questions? Uh, buildings and ground?
Uh, so buildings and ground met, uh, remember the point, uh, when we spoke about summers with building use? Uh, and, uh, seventh and school year, we had Thurgood Marshall and MLK. Boys and Girls Club will be, uh, Gradual Mendering, AP Recreation, we had MLK. Uh, we also spoke about, um, some of the, the school properties that, uh, remember the last meeting we spoke about? Uh, first doing sale on, on, uh, on a couple of buildings. And last year, we talked a little more about that finance, right? Okay. Um, I'm listening. And then, uh, another thing that we spoke about was, uh, obviously, many of us have heard how AP Dance lost their space. And so we, uh, directed the, uh, business administrator to reach out to the director about possibly renting space at a high school or somewhere, uh, somewhere in the school district. Oh, okay. Perfect. Uh, and then, uh,
Joe, was that, we didn't hear what you said?
Right. Get up to the mic. She heard a lot of her.
I reached out to the AP Technical Dance Academy and suggested that they reach out to Ivy Brown and gave her her phone number up to talk about the possibility of using space within the school district.
Class. Okay, great. And, uh, that concludes my report.
Personnel?
I just have a, two questions for, uh, buildings and grounds. Uh, have you, has buildings and grounds discussed? I haven't heard anything about the stadium.
We haven't in the last meeting. Uh, talk about that in Mexico.
We've probably been sitting here for a year. I asked about the stadium. And Mr. Girla said they haven't discussed it, at least at the last meeting. I was concerned because it's just a city with an M for quite a period of time. And the other question I had was that we had, um, approved a mural on MLK, uh, requesting them to present, uh, some sort of design that could be approved.
No, we, 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 we're still working with, uh, Nas Reed. He worked, he plays for the, uh, Minnesota Timberwolves. Uh, we approved that they were going to be putting a mural of him. He was the 2024 Sixth Man of the Year from Myersburg Parks in the NBA. And we're going to be putting up a mural. Uh, but we're still waiting. He's in the season right now. But we're, we're working to get his logistical mural to put on one of the buildings, uh, for the middle school.
So we have not?
We haven't, we haven't got his time.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a reason actually why the lights take so long? There's a kind of design.
Yeah, right now, this, you know, he's in the season.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, personnel?
Personnel. We've got it obviously. personnel met, uh, February 20th. And, uh, there are, we went over four staff appointments. Teachers aid, um, special ed, school nurse, school nurse. And, uh, and a special ed teacher for Thurgood Marshall, which are all on the agenda. Uh, also, there are a couple of, uh, fall athletic coach recommendations. And we, uh, we also spoke about, there was one salary adjustment. We're three staff reassessments. Uh, and one thing that I just want to highlight is, uh, there's one retirement, uh, that I, I'm reporting on for social worker Kimberly Jaliff. And, uh, Ms. Jaliff, Mrs. Jaliff has been with the district for over 25 years. And she retired effectively from July 1st. That's all that.
Any questions? Um, saving the best for last, mine is.
You mean talking about policy, did you?
Oh.
No, no.
No, policy. Yeah, policy.
This is the most exciting though. You know it is. Um, we met on February 20th, Policy Committee. Um, we went over the mandated, um, information for both policy and regulations from Strauss Esme. We, um, also talked about a few items that we have pulled for this meeting that we're going to talk about because we need to know more information about it for our next meeting. Uh, because there are some new items that are interesting to talk about. So we're going to wait till our next committee meeting to talk about that.
If I may, there's one thing I wanted to bring up about policy that, um, as you heard today, as you know, it's posted on the Instagram page, that they're using those, um, phone sacks. And it, and it was posted that there's some sort of procedure or policy. The board hasn't approved policy or regulation for those. So I think that is probably something that should be done in SAP. Because if there's any kind of disciplinary action or something that, um, is implemented, there really is no approval by the board to do so. How do you, what are the? The phone sacks, those, the, whatever they call them, yeah.
Yeah, I, we just checked on that. I thought I said state. I thought it stayed with all. Yeah, it's managed. Uh,
No, because there's charges that they're losing stuff now. Anything added to the electronic, uh, electronic, uh, telephones or policy? I can give them a little bit.
Okay, we're going to have Ivy look into that. We'll address it. We want her to follow.
Can't hear you.
We'll have, uh, Ivy look into that, Office of the District. And we'll follow, we'll make sure we get the policy in. Uh, any other questions?
Good. I'll just segue off that phone issue. Did I see somewhere that the state was looking to provide more money if, if you went? No. Yes, it, okay, so we'll discuss that at some point.
Yeah, to the extent that the state comes out and makes requirements or mandates, uh, the expectation is, is that it would be a funded mandate, uh, from the state. But as of right now, we haven't received any state mandates concerning, uh, cell phone bags. However, it's expected that if it does become a mandate, there would be funding available for it. But it's just an expectation.
It's nice to get mandates funded.
Yes.
So it's not, it's not an aspect of an individual district choosing from that.
Uh, well, certainly, it, it, it's, right now, it's up to individual district by district to determine whether or not they're going to have a cell phone bag policy.
Going off of what was.
Right.
I got it, thank you. And the governor did mention, uh, the governor did mention it in his, uh, budget address that, that was going to be a mandate that he was pushing to make sure districts be finding it to be very advantageous. So we make sure it's focused on their work and not their cell phone. So, you know, with this budget, we don't know. Next is finance.
Finance committee met four times this month. Um, one meeting on February 20th was the regular meeting, during which we discussed the preliminary budget and where we thought we were going to be prior to the issuance, um, of the Governor's address. Um, and where, um, Ms. Brown, the superintendent, and the monitor stood in the preparation of the budget. Uh, Mr. Javino then reviewed, um, the performance of the past year, both in terms of revenue expenditures, um, and programs that he is proposing, both, um, for educational purposes and to right-size, uh, the district, um, and, and cut expenses as well as create additional efficiencies throughout the district. Um, that will also be presented, um, later tonight. Um, we also specifically talked about health insurance coverage, whether there was any possibility to move, um, off the state, uh, coverage into a private plan that might be less expensive. Um, we were reviewing the claim incidents in the district to see whether that was, that was possible. And Ms. Brown is speaking with the insurance consultant. We also got some updates on questions that we asked about the ITC, um, business and the building. Um, and we got some update on the status of the reporting by the Alphabet School, which still has not submitted its quarterly reports and audit either timely or completely. And the district continues to pay them. However, now, uh, the state, uh, Education Department has gotten involved in this. Uh, the other three meetings of- The other three meetings of the finance committee were devoted to the preparation of a presentation for town hall this Saturday. So everyone knows, town hall is Saturday at 10:00 AM in the high school auditorium. And our plan is to present a primer really on school funding and what is required, what is required of this district, how we end up where we are, and the effect and impact on the community and our children. There'll probably be about a 35-minute presentation by the finance committee and then we will take questions and discuss the issues with the community. Again, it's a very limited conversation on what school funding requires and what the impact and consequences are for Asbury Park.
Could you speak a little bit about how the meeting's going to be run? I'm not sure if they're going to be a moderator. Who will be answering the questions on behalf of the board and our questions being?
Well, it is a finance, it is a finance committee presentation. The presentation will be made by the members of the finance committee. We have split up the work and each of us is handling different aspects of the presentation. It is not a full board presentation, it's a committee presentation.
And just to be clear, we're only talking high level or are we going to be getting into specifics about the schools like the slide and the print beyond that point?
Probably more specifics than a lot of people might want, but it is, I'm not really sure how to answer your question. We're giving an overview of what the school funding mandate is and how funding is calculated for each district and what the responsibility of the district is and the municipality and what the consequences are for our budget. I don't know what else to say.
Any other questions? Okay. Review of our regular board meeting agenda items. Any questions?
The only thing I wanted to mention when I was looking at the bills and claims, I was happy to see that we are purchasing Apple iPads and Dell Chromebooks and carts. Is there, do you have an estimate of how many of each of which we're purchasing? One of the top many?
So we've had a couple of orders come in. I think the recent, the most recent order that just went out was about 150, about a high school and 50 more to MLK. And that's the recent order we had, they're right now completing a deployment of devices in all the, in all the buildings. Just to give a little background on that, last, the end of last year, I sat with the principals and the, with the superintendent at the time, Mr. Trevino, and I wanted to make sure that we had, and ITC, that's what I'm trying to mention, we had the counting of all the devices that we had. Up until, up until that point, students were taking devices home, but we were finding that we weren't giving back. So we decided to make sure that we did a complete audit of how many devices we have. And we decided, with the help of the teachers, teaching staff as well, because they were the ones asking us to keep them in the building. To make a long story short, we started that process, we did that at the elementary schools last year, which worked out great, got a lot of great feedback, a lot of less stolen or lost devices. And so then we implemented that for the high school. And so what I wanted to do in conversation with the principals was, why don't we put carts in each classroom? It works in many other districts. It means that our students always have access to devices. It means if they need to take them home, they can do that with the help of the teacher. It takes a burden off the principal to have to manage hundreds of devices and it kind of spreads the load as far as how we tackle that. It also allows ITC the ability to manage devices because they're not going home all the time. It's really a burden when they don't come back. So I don't want to get into the details of that, it gets really crazy. So what we did was, we implemented a plan to put devices in every classroom. I'm happy to say that at this point, we are more than one-to-one in the district.
We bought 50 Chromebooks and 10 carts for the middle school and the high school, 100 Chromebooks and 2 carts.
And I have a breakdown of all the carts. I created a spreadsheet at the beginning of the year, the principals have been keeping it up, ITC just updated it this week. I know exactly how many Chromebooks are in each room, how many carts we have deployed in every building. We have more Chromebooks in students, which is what I expected because if you put Chromebook carts in every room, you don't really need to go one-to-one, you're going to go over one-to-one. My goal was if anything happened again, and I hope to God we never go into another pandemic, we will be more than prepared. And we would have the ease of being able to distribute devices if that needed to happen because they're existing in the homes. So we're in a very good place right now and I want to thank IB, I want to thank ITC, I especially want to thank the principals and the teachers for helping me come up with this plan so that we can really find a way. As a former tech coordinator, this means a lot to me. So I wanted to make sure that our students always had access to devices, that they can always count on being able to take them if they need them. Our junior students have devices that they take home back and forth, so everybody's covered. I just wanted to be clear on that. I know that was a big question that was coming up a lot. And I just wanted to kind of take you through the journey that we went through to try to get to this point. And I'm happy to say that we are, we're in a good place right now.
I just have a question. I should probably do this because my daughter has one of the Chromebooks. But is there any kind of tracking or something? If Chromebook gets lost, do we have some sort of way to look it up?
So, yeah, we have, you know, we got the asset tag, you know, an Apple device has a label to be tracked. Chromebook is a little bit different, but what we can do, we can remotely shut it down. So what ends up happening is that devices aren't coming back. So we, so when we did this at the beginning of the year was interesting because once we got back the devices that we got back, we looked at the list and saw which devices we didn't get back. ITC deactivated all those, and then hundreds of devices started coming back anyway. Because I can't use this, so they started coming back. And then of course, we had, we had a part of them that we lost and just part of the course, and they're going out. It's not what we wanted. But in doing so, we're able to remotely disable the devices, so that's a big plus. A lot of people don't know that and then it becomes a weight, you know, paperweight. So then we got a bunch back. And so we reassessed and we were able to redeploy and then supplement what we can find in the budget and like I said, this is where we are.
Any other questions?
Any questions about the? He says 13 and 14 Steam Park Academy that looks really great. I mean, I think we should be doing these kinds of things. I'm not quite sure though that we refer to after-school snacks and that sort of thing. It does strike me as an after-school extracurricular program, let's do it. If we need to do it on Saturdays, let's pay for it over the summer. I mean, this is the kind of thing we need to be doing. But are we doing it during the school day coming up? And that would be more of my concern that now we're pulling from other subjects at that time to do that. It strikes me as an extracurricular that would be great, that we should be offering throughout. So maybe the principal?
Yes. Steam Park currently is an elective. The way it's done, we just started the third market period and unfortunately, we don't have our teacher willingly, so that opened up the ability for us to offer another elective instead of having such a teacher. So one of our teachers volunteered to use her prep and her duty to oversee that program while we get the teachers from Brookdale to push it to the classroom. It starts at the very end of the block and it goes into the after-school program for homework help, additional support. So it starts at 1:30 and goes along to 3:30, where the students have the right to come back to help. Also, all of the trips that we take in this program is from 2:30 to 5:30, 2:35 to 5:30 after-school. So originally, I didn't understand what you're saying, but our teacher is not being paid because that's her prep and duty. She said to make sure that he had a specific interest in the classroom when the Dell's pushing to Brookdale. And it's a STEAM course where it aligns to the eighth grade and seventh grade standards. And like I said, it was an elective that we chose the students based on their test scores. And as we remember, when the students took the science class as fifth graders, it was zero superficial. Those same students are now eighth graders. So we felt that bringing biology, chemistry, and physics to them by a specific college professionals, it gives them an addition so they're not interfering with the science courses. The science courses are there. They, this is an elective and a specialized elective that the goal is to drive the test scores for engineers selling eighth grade science students that will take. So it starts at late afternoon and it carries over and you take one trip every month to anything assessments as well as testing data as well. And also, we have a teacher here tonight that oversees that program. If, if you don't mind coming up, that will volunteer to oversee, or like I said, or perpetually, to make sure that those students are getting the best experience possible.
Good morning, good afternoon, sorry, evening. We're, I'm lost, I'm tired. So what you have right in front of you is some of the newsletters that presented, that were presented to you, that was created from the teachers and myself and students of some activities we've been doing since Steam Park has come in. The students are so excited about the program, I'm excited about the program. And I think this is a great addition to what we're doing for our students. And we don't have the opportunity to actually have an activity where it carries on after school and they can get exactly, they need any tool, any STEAM, anything that they want to learn additionally they say after school and they get to do it and kids are taking data to it. So I'm really proud of the program and I hope that you enjoy the newsletters that the teachers and the students created for your student.
Thank you.
And she's a phenomenally teacher, just have to say that. Selfish flag.
We could keep it going, we could keep it going beyond the dates here if we wanted.
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
I'm under the impression that electives are offered after-school. How can this be like an elective?
No, extracurriculars are after-school. Electives are doing, electives are considered specials, i.e. physical education, i.e. STEM music, arts, Spanish. So we offer Spanish, we offer art, while our teacher is currently on leave, we offer music, phenomenal. So an elective is actually a special and the way it's designed strictly in the middle school is supposed to be choice. But you know, if every single student picked the same elective, then we can't put 100 kids in the classroom. So we give some choice to most electives, such as music, it's a choice, art, it's a choice. But sometimes we have to put them in there based on scheduling and the balance so we don't have any classrooms over 20 students. So this STEAM, if we had enough, we have a STEAM elective earlier, which our science teacher, Mrs. Syracuse, did the STEAM program as a part of our elective schedule, had nothing to do with the core seventh grade science classes that she was teaching. Actually, it was a combined elective with our art teacher and our science teacher to offer a STEAM experience. That was marking period one and marking period two. Now, marking period three, four, we were fortunate enough to bring Brookdale in and I just fell in love when I visited Brookdale and I saw our students so engaged up there. I said, wow, I would love coding, dissecting, a periodic table to come directly to our students in the mixed classroom, both seventh and eighth grade. That's some of our electives, like art and music are not by grade level because it's by choice.
I had, I had one question if I may.
Yes.
So you say it's an elective, so are they earning credits?
Well, at the middle school, we don't get credit because you just get a grade. You tell me, yes, it's a traditional A, B, C, D, or N. But yes, you do get a grade, you get a grade for music, you get a grade for art, you get a grade for Spanish, you get a grade for STEM, just like you get a grade for ELD, math, science, and social studies. So on the report bar, you will see, we call it technically enhanced period, so it's TEP. That's the coding and genesis in the schedule. So it's the technology enhanced program because they're using the computers, they're using a coding program and things like that with the, using our laptops sometimes to support what they're doing hands-on. So, but yes, there, I see your question. They do get a grade for it and a grade registers as an elective course and then of course, it allows them to materially want the high school.
And maybe this is for Mr. Trevino or Mr. Ruiz or someone that has knowledge about curriculum. Does it have to be approved by the board as a course to get a grade or how does that work? I'm not saying I don't disagree with the effectiveness it may have, but if it's an elective in the school, shouldn't it be listed as a course and approved as a part of the curriculum? That's my question. Since it's, you know, beginning year, after the school year has started.
So it would fall under any of our science courses and it covers all the science curriculum that we do in the school regardless. So for us, it's not a conflict in any way as far as the curriculum is concerned. And electives, as Mr. Moncora stated, at the middle school level, it's not like the high school level, there's no credits really earned, there's a passing or trailing or, in this case, an A, B, C is more to inform the parent and the student where they are in their grading as far as their elective course. But it's tied very directly to our science curriculum.
Any other questions?
Well, first I want to thank Ms. Moncora, hold on, Ms. Moncora. Because we continue to go through this and I wasn't on the board then and I heard that we never had much emphasis on science, technology, and even electives and going up. You know, our kids weren't capable, I heard some words like that back in the day. So I appreciate the extension and yes, Donnie, I do agree that we should, you know this budget, you're on the budget finance committee, find that money because we need to, we need to extend it even to the summer and as much as we can and as much as we need to do it to the high schools and everything else. So, you know, let's just keep this moving.
Okay, we're going to move on to open public participation. I will read. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the values of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance. Provide members of the public the opportunity to express themselves in school matters of the community interest. The public comment portion of this meeting is not a question and answer session. All public comments shall be directed to the board president or the presiding officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the presiding officer and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation as passed. All public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the forebarn rules or therefore interfere with the orderly operation of this board may be removed from the meeting. the orderly operation of this board may be removed from the meeting.
At Levee County, Yidden County, um, I just wanted to highlight and give props to Dr. Schultz and staff at our building. Today, we had a great Black History Program, our sixth graders, third graders, uh, fourth grade, all great.
Four thousand and six.
Yes, had a great, a beautiful performance and, um, I will say this, and I'm speaking for myself, what was noticeably absent for me was the support from all, some of you. And I think it, it was such a good show.
It was so good.
Props, it was so good. Um, and, and it just, I, um, that's what I am hoping, I'm hoping to see more presence from board members, um, whether you realize it administrative, whether you realize it or not, the students are paying attention. Um, and, uh, I would love, because there's so much happening in our building, um, so much, uh, collaboration between faculty members, a lot of things that are coming up that I won't say, but a lot of programs that are coming up, staff members as well as students are very excited about and I would like to see that excitement, you know, from all sides because it helps. That's all I have to say, thank you. Oh, yes. Ms. Jackson, you won, thank you. I stand corrected. Thank you, Ms. Jackson, for being there, I appreciate it. All right, sorry, thank you for the correction.
I would like to thank, I'd like to thank the staff for, I wanted to be at that event, I just, my time, I'm going to be at one tomorrow, no disrespect to, to middle school, I'm going to be, I, I know, well, I, I'm trying to make it all, I wish, I wish my time was, is, I got a lot of stuff going on, but no, and I, like I said, I actually walk in on quite a few things that I shouldn't for preparation for these events, so, you know, missing them at, you know, them all coming together. So I want to thank everybody for all the, the Black History events, like I said, I'm going to make the one tomorrow, uh, at one, but, you know, I, I want to make all of them in all the events, so thank you guys.
Mr. President, if I may, is there a way we could get all these events because I'm missing some, some of them? I don't get all of them in an email. Just some way, maybe to work with the acting superintendent and try to get some sort of listing so that we have advance notice so we can make arrangements to attend, um, some of the events, we can't, we can't attend all of them, of course.
Yeah, that information was sent out. I want to go, Ms. Jackson?
Uh, Ms. Pelosi placed a district-wide website a week and a half ago.
Week and a half ago, yeah, new one now, yes.
Yeah, I think, I think, remember this program was on and I, I think I got a, a message for one or the other and I just, I don't R S P if I know I can't name it, but like I said, I, I am trying to stay aware and like I said, please keep on continuing and know that the board members supporting, uh, you guys are going to try to get out more. Hopefully I'm not, I'm just speaking for myself, but I hope everyone else is going to do the same.
Good evening, my name is Zina Summerlin, um, and I would just like to say, since you're being a thank you, um, because I sent you a link, um, to the Mayor's Wellness Committee, um, thanks to Ms. Wendy, um, but there's going to be a light show, um, coming up on March 21st and 22nd at Paramount Theater. I have left flyers in the buildings at every school. The only problem I'm having with this flyer that went out, it's a little bit too dark. Like you really have to read this flyer to figure out where the event is at. Um, so I have reached out to the company, um, to ask them to redo a flyer to where it would advertise Paramount Theater, March 21st, 22nd, a light show. This one's easier because Bradley School, sorry, Ms. Felicia, but she sent me an email saying, Zina, I can't even read this. And when I looked at it, I was like, you know what, Ms. Felicia? You are right, you have to go read this. And I took them to the senior center, um, where we presented for Springwood Avenue arising. And most of the seniors are saying, I can't read that, just tell me the doc. So I will reach out to them to make sure we do get more flyers back in the district that is electable so you can read them. Um, but I do appreciate the opportunity of letting our kids know of a free opportunity that's available in our community that they can actually come out and actually experience the first, the first sound. Thank you.
Thank you. Zina, are, all the, all the principals got it, right? Okay. Well, the new one we're going to get.
They have the dark one.
Yeah, they have the dark one.
But I'll make sure they're working on making, making a lighter one because this one you really can't read when it says Paramount Theater, which is on the back of the card, but it's all black. And the wording is really thin, so you can't see where the event is going to be at. So they are working on new ones, so I'll make sure, once they get new ones done, I will actually make sure they get in all the schools.
You're always the wonderful, I love you.
Sheila Brazil, 100 Jefferson Street. Good evening, how are you all doing? Um, this is, um, for the, the night out, not the one to go to bed with the chickens. The Minnesota Timberwolves is playing the Los Angeles Lakers at ten o'clock tonight. I'm not sure if it's on ESPN or TNT or whatever, or the NBA channel, so, but look it up if you want to see Najee. So I will support them because of him, meet me at a black and blue, you know, red and white Alabama and, you know, Dallas Cowboys thing, so, you know, so support him, watch the game. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm the Council, 302 Third Avenue, Asbury Park. I'm standing up here to thank Mr. Javino for the program that he implemented that's helping my son a lot. He has grown into a mature young man since Mr. Javino implemented this program. I get less phone calls from the Snyder and Mr. Hay if I'm here. Um, no phone calls have I spent suspended at all this school year, so I just want to thank you for putting this program together.
And, uh, I see Ms. Peterson back there and she knows that I even pick songs, but I'm sorry I missed her. Thank you.
Hello, Felicia Simmons, um, Sewell Avenue, Asbury Park, um, a lot of stuff going on, but I mainly are here, um, to talk about how great our kids is, our children are, and how great, um, opportunities they are out there for our children. And what's such opportunity? Um, this past Friday, we did our Black History event at the West Side Community Center and part of that was signing MOUs and relationships with different organizations that advance our community to go forward, not just to talk about it, but to be about it. And one of those such things were with the Eastern Atlantic Council of Carpenters, the Carpenter Union, um, over six states with a friend of mine, Anthony, um, who is the head. And he wants to offer and has offered and will come to the school district again and offer a program for trades and an opportunity to go right into the Carpenter Union. Um, not just a, a sample, we're designing a specific program for Asbury Park and beyond. And also inside of that program are for the children from middle school age to high school age that we give a direct path line into the Carpenter Union. That is something real, that is something tangible, that is something needed because there's a shortage and that is something not offered anywhere else. They have a specific program for Asbury Park. That's how we can pull ourselves out of this, um, hurdle, I mean, this, this hurdle that we have here, this ditch, right? I'm saying the middle school, um, Bradley Obama, excuse me, Obama School, make it for the community, make it for our organizations like the dance program and the Carpenter Union and different things that make it a, a sending district that we can make economic, um, finances on and pull ourselves out of these different, um, pitches because it's opportunity, right? There's needs, right, from mental health and other different things that these school districts all need but don't have, our school district needs but we don't have. And there are people waiting out there right now, waiting with opportunities to give it to us and we need to take it. I'm going to come back with a direct proposal with the Carpenter Union to present in front of the board. And then also, I just want to suggest that I see a lot of board stuff happening, individual committees, and it's, it seems to be more streamlined if you have a more of a full board functioning committee, I said, because the committee doesn't really have any power, right? They don't have the authority to call people and say things, right? It goes from the board to the community and then from the committee out. And it, it seems like we're skipping the board part, which makes us very valuable for different things in the future. That's it.
Ms. Simmons, uh, Ms. Simmons, uh, if you need to talk to anybody, talk to our curriculum director and, you know, tell them. Gentlemen, uh, he was, he just had, he had his hand up. No, let, let him sit, let him sit there. Yeah.
Thank you for having me. My name is William Butler, I used to live on Third Avenue, Fourth Avenue, Seventh Avenue, First Avenue. And when you have a mental illness like I have, you live just about everywhere in the county. For eight and a half years, um, I worked at Watkins and for thirty-nine years, I worked at mental health, uh, the people who have the same illness that I have. The idea that I have is that I was really glad to see the energy of the people who are here and the young people that you represent. It's a lot to be proud of and I have a couple of ideas that I'd like to share with you, uh, that I wrote down, uh, on my way coming here. I am very well aware and scared of the cuts that are coming down on a federal level. It is going to affect our community in a way that is really going to be devastating. Um, and I would like us to, uh, get a hold of former Lieutenant Governor, uh, Rudakno and get, uh, fulfill, um, food for, uh, the force of our families so that, uh, on Friday, we can give kids a backpack for food. I'm really worried about the Medicaid cuts and the, um, you know, where families are going to have to wonder whether they, um, put food on the table or whether they can get the, uh, services that they need. One of the things that I think we need to do is to, uh, go to not only our governor, but, uh, our senators and our councilors and hold on and ask for a town hall meeting that they can meet with us, get our concerns and, um, and I would like to help in any way that I possibly can. Like I said, I've been an advocate for thirty-nine years and I'll be an advocate till the day I die. Amen.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
My name is Nancy Phillips and I do not live in Asbury Park, I live in Oakville. What I came up here to say is, of course, y'all know that I follow the paper faithfully. For the past few years, I've been telling America how foul y'all was. For the past few years, I've been telling America how y'all been reading, um, school grades, uh, how y'all was just passing children, um, y'all were giving out diplomas to, to kids who did not deserve to be, uh, walking the stage. Um, you lie about the attendance, all of this stuff that I've been standing here telling y'all to y'all faces. Y'all all looked at me like I had the dumb look, act like y'all didn't know what was going on, act like y'all didn't know that Mark Arpino was suspended when, when, when the coach, uh, was walking around the football field naked, act like y'all not aware that Mark, the Monmouth County Prosecutor is currently investigating. How many minutes do I have left? I am talking, I am talking, I have the floor here.
Please.
Please what?
Not make accusations.
I'm not making accusations and Asbury Park, the Monmouth County, Monmouth County Prosecutor, Mark Spence.
Accusations?
Of what? No, well, according to the Asbury Park press.
Accusations on people without facts.
I read the paper, so I can explain the fact, explain the fact. There's the Monmouth County Prosecutor, Mark Spence, currently investigating the Superintendent Mark Arpino, yes or no? Yes or no? He being investigated.
Right now, you're making accusations.
Oh, okay, okay, well, according, allegedly, according to the Asbury Park press, but that's neither here or there. You're worried about me, worried about the board that's suing y'all. Every board member is suing everybody. You sit up here worried about we don't have fun, of course you don't have fun because they're all going to be issued out a lawsuit. Mark Arpino is suing, Dr. Rashawn Adder is suing, you got like five current lawsuits and y'all worried about phone books and we got a hundred and fifty phone books. Now, so what? So we Neptune and every student in Neptune has a phone book. Y'all are like, your hundred and fifty phone books is more, we have more phone books than the students, than how many students in class? It's an embarrassment. Y'all don't care about the, the students. Y'all sit here and act like we, we are a team, we have order, we have ethics. It's a front for the people who don't know better. It's a front for the people who don't read the paper and know how foul y'all are. Where y'all getting millions of dollars for to pay, to pay for this man to sue y'all? Meanwhile, he went to jail a month, he got to a guy to try to sue y'all. I'm saying, young man, I wouldn't send my dog there, relax, wait, but that's just me, I'm a Neptune.
I really wasn't going to say tonight, but I am. My name is, um, Kalin Fidel and, uh, I've been with the district for twenty-nine years. I'm a ESL bilingual teacher. Two things, I heard, um, I don't know if I'm allowed to talk about it, but we split last minute, um, to something about the health insurance that they're trying to explore. I don't know if it's going to change or not.
Well, we can't, we can't discuss, yeah, we can't, we can't discuss.
Because I was like, if you're trying to save money, do not take that away from us because we have a lot of employees with underlying issues, we need our health insurance, trying to save money somewhere else. We are top-heavy, very top-heavy than before. And then I'm looking at C5 number one, we already have a special ed supervisor, why do we need a consultant for special ed? If we saving money, we say we don't have any money, so why spending money that we don't have? Do not touch our health insurance because we have employees with underlying issues that need what we have. Don't do that. Save money by letting go of the top heavy that we have and then stop hiring people that we don't need. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? It's a public session and can we vote ongoing? Anybody make a motion to go into executive session? Yeah, uh, monthly hip report.
Yes, we had three incidents this month, one was founded and those students are going through the proper councilman through the guidance house in the building. We had three incidents during the month of February.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
That was the principal's.
Time to talk, yes.
Before we leave the-
The state monitor?
Sorry, before we leave the superintendent's report, I have a request, may I?
What people did this?
I just had a quick request, the ongoing superintendent reports, if I might raise it now, so we can talk about it.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. And I was just wondering if, it was great to hear from the principals tonight about the enrollment and attendance. And I know we've gotten reports in the past, and the community has. What I would like to propose is that each month during the superintendent's report, since it's on the agenda always, are that we hear from the superintendent as to the overall student attendance report by school, that includes the number of days possible, the days absent, the percentage of attendance. And then similarly for the staff, the same report by school, and as well as the enrollment number, how many students we have in each school each month. So this is a request. I know we've had a lot of discussions about transparency and giving the community information they ask regularly.
Yes, and the principals weren't transparent tonight with all their information. But I will take that under advisement, thank you.
Thank you. What I'd like to do then is make a motion for the board that we ask the superintendent to report on attendance by students and staff and enrollment every month by school. So I make that motion, is there a second?
I'll second it, because it used to be part of the regular agenda until I was something on third and getting that much.
The only concern that I would have is you're actually imposing additional requirements on the superintendent beyond what his contract requires. To the extent that you want to ask the administration to report out that information on a monthly basis, that's fine. And they can certainly do that. But what you're actually doing by this motion is directing the superintendent to do something in terms of his job function that I would say can be done in another way without possibly violating the Ethics Act.
So I don't see how it violates the Ethics Act to report the attendance. I, if I may, I've reviewed other minutes of other local districts, and each of them report monthly on attendance and enrollment. So it is a fact.
I agree, I agree.
Okay? So I don't understand why reporting to the board the status of the district would fall outside of this contract. So if you could explain to me how that is, that would be great.
You're directing the superintendent to do something, and that is administrative. The information that you're requesting can and should be provided to you, but just not, don't do it by way of directing the superintendent to open you up to other issues. To the extent that the board, to the extent that the board would like that information on a monthly basis, it can be reported out here in public from the administration. Not a problem. I'm just saying the way that you're going about it right now is giving me cause for concern. You can continue to do what you plan to do, that's not a problem. Well, it might be a problem, we'll find out. I'm just suggesting that we do it a different way and ask the administration to report out, and then that way it's a non-issue.
Can I, can I make a suggestion then?
No, may I, just one second, Barbara. So the only individual in the school district that the Board of Education has any authority over, right, to request anything from, is the superintendent. He is, you know, for lack of a better phrase, our only employee, right? His responsibility is directly connected to administering the school district. So what I'm asking is that he provide numbers every month, numbers that I've seen presented in this forum by the superintendent in the past, but on a regular basis, so that we as the Board of Education can see where things are going, what is the trajectory. And so I don't understand what potential, if you could explain to us what potential concerns there are, because there's a motion and there's a second.
The potential concerns are that this is not written in the contract for the superintendent to provide you this report. I'm telling you that you are certainly and absolutely entitled to that information, and it should be provided to you on a monthly basis upon request. I'm just suggesting that the way that you're going about this right now can open you up to exposure to liability, that's all.
May I, may I make a suggestion?
That's all.
If you modify your motion that the board president work with the superintendent to provide monthly updates to student attendance, staff attendance, and enrollment of each school, which I believe even attendance in general is a responsibility to be reported out. If we can just modify the motion to have the board president work with the superintendent to ensure that information appears on the agenda on each one.
That would be appropriate.
Can be. Then I will second that motion.
I think that it should actually work that superintendent to make a report to the Board of Education on a monthly basis as to the attendance and enrollment in the school district by school every month.
Can I ask something just students?
No.
And staff?
And then also the-
That is appropriate. We have a motion that we have. I will work with the superintendent to have him provide information on student enrollment, student attendance, and staff for each board. Can I get a roll call?
Ms. Clark? Yes. Ms. Clark?
No.
Ms. Wilson? Mr. LaRocque?
Yes.
Ms. Zensky?
Yes.
Dr. Henner?
No.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
No.
Ms. Robinson?
No.
I believe statutorily you're supposed to report those items to the public, so I'm not quite sure why we don't know on a resolution. And especially with Ms. Ray, she said, "Can we talk about transparency?" The public needs to know what the enrollment is. The public needs to know what attendance is. It's not something that's a secret.
Right now, we're getting into a characteristic of what we want to be transparent. I think we had a great experience that our principals, and I can work with the superintendent to request that information, even due, knowing how we're doing, but making requirements and opening us, because his evaluation depends on a lot of this stuff. The actual significance of negotiations deal with a lot of these things. But like I said, I want to see an empowerment probably of more of the staff, taking more control, giving us information on all these incidents, situations like they just did today. I actually was, and I can't, don't think anybody in this room was against the fact that the principals gave these great performances and information of what we did. So what we can do is, I will talk to the superintendent and work out a way of getting this information out to us and formulate it where we're discussing how we're making sure we can do the transparent motion about this. So our next step is to make a motion to go into executive. And it's going to be an extended amount of time.
The next item is the state monitor's report.
Oh. He's over there quiet.
This does raise on one. If state monitor is pretty much the prior month since the last report, focused huge majority of efforts and activity on the development of the public. That's pretty much him or my folks.
Move over, buddy. Again, the state monitor has focused since the last report from the prior meeting, has been, the majority of the time has been focused on the health at Asbury Park with the development of the 25, 26, 50. That's been primary focus and concern in the majority of the efforts. And a lot of the, a lot of the work, you know, is gonna come up. The results are gonna come out through the town hall meeting, the budget process, which we're not sure. But pretty much it's been focused on the development of the budget.
Mr. Fisher, may I ask a quick question? Do we have two state monitors at the moment, or are you just filling in for Mr. Shafter while I'm away?
Yeah, Mr. Shafter is away some early, he's back real soon. On just, it's in the gap over there. Do you?
Great, thank you.
Right now, before we make that motion, like I said, I don't know how many people are gonna want to stick around for close executive time, who are gonna be in there. Please remember that March 1st at 10 o'clock in the high school, we're gonna be having a budget hearing, a town hall meeting referencing the budget and how the budget is put together. Beware, I mean, coming to this meeting, there's gonna be a lot of things that we can't discuss, that information that we have to put together that is still in negotiating stages. But hopefully, we're gonna give a presentation that will tell you how this budget is coming together, how we got here, what we're looking at. And also, I just want to say again, we're working, we're continually working with the state and the state legislature to actually work on S2 and getting S2 changed to help accommodate our district and many other districts in the state. So we're on a continual basis with our legislation to basically try to formulate getting this done. But if we can make a motion to go into executive session, like I said, it's gonna be lightning.
Second? Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. LaRocque? Ms. Zensky?
Yes.
Dr. Henner?
Yes.
Ms. Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Watson? Ms. Robinson?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, the board will be retiring to close executive session for approximately an hour and a half. The board will be discussing matters related to personnel, litigation, and contracts. The board will not take any action in executive session. The board will come out from executive session, back into this room, and any action will be taken in this room in public after the conclusion of executive session. Thank you.